All right, stand for the pledge. Pledge of the leaded citizens of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have Pastor Hickman here from the Royal Act Nazarene Church to do the invocation. Pastor, thank you.
Absolutely. God, we thank you for today, for tonight, and for those that are helping us to lead us in our city of Galleon. We're praying that you just help tonight be beneficial, help tonight be a blessing somehow to do and be able to do what these guys, these individuals do. And we just thank you for the leadership skills that they offer at the table here. And we're praying that you lead us and you guide us and we make Galleon as good of a city as we can in the midst of the turmoil and the chaos that we live around everywhere else. We just pray for the safety and Galleon to continue to be the place that it is. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, moving on to roll call for council.
Ms. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Durbin.
Here.
Dr. Felner.
Here.
Ms. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Ms. Zeger.
Here.
The elected officials.
Mayor Leary. Auditor Satterfield.
Here.
Director Val Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
I did receive a note from Mayor Leary this morning that he wasn't going to be present, so.
Can I have, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Botkins for his inexperience.
Oh, yes, thank you. Motion made by Dr. Felner, second by Ms. Alt. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Could I get a motion? Has everybody looked at the minutes from the previous meeting in G twenty-eight?
I want to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All seconded.
Ms. Frank, seconded by Ms. Durbin. Roll call? Oh, yeah, you're right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
You're supposed to say all opposed to. You're supposed to say any opposed to.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
That's Robert's little corner, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. We have nothing to add to the agenda. Can I, Dr. Felner?
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the agenda by Dr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Richard. And this is a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, very good. We're moving to, I don't have any notes to address council at this time, so we do have a couple of public hearings today, so we'll move to the first one.
All right, the first one is for the amending of Galleon Codified Ordinances eleven thirty-five oh two, and that is, it's detailed in ordinance forty-one, twenty twenty-two forty-one. And what it will do, it will add section C that does not currently exist in eleven thirty-five oh two. It will add that, and that section C says two family dwellings in structures originally designed for that purpose. And that is the only change that is being made in, as part of that change for the eleven thirty-five oh two.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Members, this, I'll give you a little more history on this. What it was, was we have a couple, before, actually was zoning, and they recommended it to law ordinance. What it amounts to is the current ordinance listed does not allow a obious duplex. And what I mean by obious duplex, that it has very distinctive two entrances. For example, the folks that had approached both my committee as well, zoning is the one on Union Street, it has very two distinct entrances, very two distinct, it was a duplex at one time. Under the current ordinance, if that duplex is allowed to either be changed, or it's occupied as a single family, or if it is not occupied at all after two years, if, due to state law, it becomes a single family, and it is not allowed to revert back. The folks that are involved, they purchased this property, they're in the process of renovating with the idea to have two families there. So this came before the Law and Ordinance Committee, and we felt that this change, or I should say, this addition to this particular ordinance would allow them to still be able to do that without having any major change to the ordinance itself. And I think Mr. Palmer is pretty much there.
Well, yes, that's all absolutely correct. What it is, is the current R one C zoning classification in Galleon doesn't allow for duplexes. And this has been the case since that code was adopted about two thousand and nine. So we have several houses, as Mr. Richard just shared, which aren't currently used as duplexes, but which were built that way. There was some discussion about expanding possibility of putting duplexes in other areas in R one C, but that would require a more extensive, a more extensive change to the zoning code, and would take several months and or money to accomplish. The folks that came to us, this change is a relatively simple one, and I felt was appropriate, could be done now, and so there would be an opportunity down the road to look at the zoning in more detail, to see if an additional set of criteria is appropriate for duplexes. But for right now, this is simply what it would be, is simply allowing duplexes in structures originally built for that purpose. There's no question that the one, and as Mr. Richard referred to, a couple, because they're actually here, if you have any questions, but that that was originally built as a duplex. So it's that simple.
Mr. Palmer, you said adding duplexes in the future to R one C, are you talking about new build? Obviously, it doesn't, it's not germane to this public hearing or the ordinance, but is that what you were referring to?
I think, go ahead.
No, I think the offshoot of the discussion was, we all know that there are houses around that are du tri quad quintupleplexes that were originally not built that way, and those are not included in this ordinance. This was a structure that was originally built as, as Mr. Richard said, two entrances, staircases, but clearly intended to be two residences, not something that is.
Would you answer your question, Dr. Felner? Yes, it could be just new builds, but it could also be conversion of certain single family into two families. That's something that would be looked at down the road. This is, this is the first step in a process of looking at that issue. This, and I don't think Julie mentioned it on our mic, this went to the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission first recommended this, then it went to the Law and Ordinances Committee, they sent it to council, so that's what you have before you. It does have the Planning Commission's recommendation attached to it.
And to be back on Mr. Palmer's, Dr. Felner, is that I think our committee, after once this is decided upon, that I look to see to revisit what you're just indicating, to see if we have a further discussion in that regard on that.
Any further questions, concerns, comments? I think we can move on to the.
There's a side sheet going around that is for both of them. All right, so the next one is. The next one is for the rezoning part of in lot four fifty-six, also known as five fifty South Market Street. That building is currently in a general industrial, actually it's a general industrial all the way down to Wilson on that side of the street. The backyard does back up to R one C, and that's how it is able to be rezoned to R one C, doesn't make it spot zoning, correct?
That's what they're from spot zoning.
Right, because it does back up, the backyard backs up to R one C, and then this one is changing it from general industrial to R one C, which is historical neighborhood, single family residence. And the order to that one is here too, I believe, Mrs..
All right, do we have, have any discussion on?
And the reason for the zoning request is?
So this house was originally a single family. The business owner across the street purchased it and plans to remodel it into office space, so he requested the zoning change, never did it go through a remodel, so it's just, it's just a vacant, what was a triplex at one point, planning to turn into a single family, just completely vacant, had some prior damage at one point, just trying to restore back to a single family home. So that way it can be used, because the business owner across the street no longer plans to make it office space. There's also, I mean, that's, as mentioned, there's a line of houses there that are in the same zoning issue, so if those properties were ever to become vacant for more than two years, you could possibly lose, I think, up to thirteen houses that would just most likely become vacant at that point. Any other question?
Yeah, I'm, just a little, I mean, I absolutely see the request. When it was built originally, and I'm subdirecting at, to you, Mr. Palmer.
Yep, I'm hearing you.
When it was originally built, it was allowed to be built there because of the zoning.
Yes.
And then with the update, as you referred to earlier, about two thousand and nine, it got plumped into the R one C?
No, it got plumped into the general industrial.
General, I'm sorry.
Which does not allow single family residences.
Okay, that clarified it, thank you.
And all the other houses along their grandfathered, and they haven't been empty, so they're still okay. But since his was, he's going to change it so he can do something.
Completely understand.
Five fifty, and there's the maps on your, in front of you guys that are all around, I didn't have enough everybody to share, but there's maps that show the front of the house, it's just a couple down from the moose, all right, you might be friends with it.
There's a parking lot in the.
So there's one house and then a person maybe?
Yeah.
It's a nice brick home at one time. It's a happy, I think it had a fire damage, you mentioned.
The back, the back's changed, the backside, so there's a duplex in the front, a brick home bar, and then I'm assuming it was an addition at one point, might have been original, but that part burnt, that part burnt down, they tore that down, and now it's just that one brick.
Yes, that's what he wants to do, he's. Any other discussion on that?
And this is going to be twenty twenty-two dash forty-six?
Yes, 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 sorry, that's what I was reading, correct?
Sir, are you going to be doing all the remodeling?
Correct.
So we can, that's for C M H T T.
I hope my show comes on, yeah.
So this is for your residence or your?
This, the plans for this one, depending on how the numbers work out, will either become a single family rental, a four bedroom rental, or a single family themselves, it kind of depends on what material prices are at that time, and kind of what the best financial probably is.
Anything else? All right, very good. It's seven sixteen. Thank you, we'll move on to the legislation. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-one.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash forty-one entitled Ordinance Amending Section eleven thirty-five oh two of the City of Galleon Codified Ordinances relating to permitted uses in the R one C zoning district if declared emergency.
Mr. Richard. As we've already had the public hearing, this is the accompanying ordinance to make that change under permitted uses. I think that this is a good change for this ordinance. I would highly recommend that we move this to, and pass this tonight, so these folks can go ahead and complete the renovations and be able to have some families occupy the structure. If there's no, unless somebody else has anything else, I would like to make a motion then to suspend the rules on twenty twenty-two dash forty-one and move it to the final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Zeger.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Zeger.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Frank.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion to suspend the rules carried. Ms. Zeger.
I would like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-one.
Motion to pass by Ms. Zeger, seconded by Ms. Alt. Discussion? Now, discussion, roll call.
Ms. Zeger.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven oh, six oh. Moving on to ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash forty-six.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash forty-six entitled Ordinance Adopting the Recommendation of the City of Galleon Planning Commission and Rezoning Part of In Lot Four Fifty-Six, also known as Parcel nineteen dash zero zero dash two 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 oh eight dash zero zero zero, from general industrial to historic neighborhood, single family residential R one C.
Thank you. Ms. Richard.
Mr. President, members, as we discussed in the public hearing, this building, gentlemen here is wanting to renovate this and make it into a structure that someone will give a living, whether it be rental or a purchase. So unless there's any more discussion, I would like to make a motion to move ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six to the final reading.
Motion by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Alt.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Frank.
Yes.
Ms. Zeger.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. That was a motion to suspend the rules.
Right.
Ms. Zeger.
I'm making a motion to go ahead and pass the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash forty-six.
Motion to pass by Ms. Zeger, seconded by Ms. Durbin. Roll call, discussion?
I just have one, yes, quick question. There's the word historical in there, does that, is that all R one C?
You know, Doc, that's a great question, and in two thousand and nine, they chose to put the word historical in there, which is a misnomer.
Okay.
I've always considered in my mind, and I would ask you to, to refer to it as traditional.
Okay.
Those are traditional neighborhoods, those, that's the largest, in terms of area, the largest district in Galleon. It's almost everything, you're in R one, maybe in R one C, but certainly they are, and it's just, they're large.
Okay.
It's traditional neighborhood.
Because when we talk historical, we're usually referring to. Harding Way.
We're afraid to design a district.
Yeah. All right, thanks.
We need to change the word in the ordinance?
That's actually.
No, no, that's in the zoning, but it's kind of a, it's sort of misleading.
I mean. I'd love it if council would consider changing the word historical to traditional in the zoning code.
I was getting ready to say, this is sort of a.
Such a misnomer.
Refinement, so that will be a definite point.
Yeah.
To look at.
Yeah, at that time. Thank you, Dr. Felner. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Zeger.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three entitled Ordinance Adopting the Solid Waste Management, Solid Waste Plan Update for the Crawford County Solid Waste Management District and Declared Emergency.
All right, discussion, Ms. Alt.
This came through the Utilities Committee last week, and we discussed what this was. Every three years, the Crawford County Solid Waste Management puts out a plan that they are going to follow for the four years that follow. This is something that a certain percentage of municipalities within Crawford County have to approve in order for the plan to go into effect. There are some timelines for the approval so that it can get into effect and everything goes the way it should, so that's why it's listed as an emergency because of those timelines. I think that we all got a copy of the plan to review, it was long, but kind of for discussion, it's kind of just one of those things that we do every few years to kind of stay in compliance and do what we can do to support the Crawford County Solid Waste Management. So we didn't have a lot of questions in committee, and it seemed to be kind of a no-brainer, but going through and asking this one, and so we can, as an emergency.
I was going to say, what municipality would, would get on board?
I don't know.
I mean, what would you do if you didn't?
Yeah, was it?
They had to go back to the drawing.
Yeah, was I thinking?
They would, so if you have a certain percentage within the county, they have to.
They have to have sixty percent. The largest city and.
The largest city has to be part of it, so the service has to pass it, and then.
And then sixty percent.
Sixty percent, including the service.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Richard. Obviously, this is a, an update that goes, comes along as a matter of business every so many years, so having said that, and it's obviously a no-brainer, I would like to make a motion to have, or excuse me, to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three and move it to the final reading.
Motion to move it to the final reading by Mr. Richard, seconded by Ms. Frank.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Frank.
Yes.
Ms. Zeger.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. All right, Ms. Alt.
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three.
Motion made by Ms. Alt, seconded by Ms. Zeger. Discussion? No discussion, roll call.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Ms. Zeger.
Yes.
Ms. Durbin.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. Other business? Just here.
Do we have other business?
Yep. Go ahead, Ms. Frank.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the new fireworks, thought that way, look back. I know there was some discussion perhaps to maybe amend that, and living where I live, I think next year we need to look at that, it was very disturbing. And I, I mean, it was very, very loud, very disturbing, more so than I would have expected. I understand that there was a maybe illegal enforcement, but there were fireworks exploding in my yard, and it sounded like a war zone, and it hasn't been like that before in Galleon. The conditions were extremely dry, and I was concerned about that, it hadn't rained in two weeks, and I know just from feedback and looking at some things, that people lost dogs, there was a lot of dog barking, there was a lot of things that went on, so I'm just wondering if anyone, you know, experienced that, or maybe we can hopefully talk about that next year, or perhaps even sooner, since they're still about to, to set off fireworks per the, I mean, law, and we have the rest of the summer, so I'm not sure at this point where to go with it, but I know that it was, and I don't want to be like that person caring, but it was, I wouldn't say anything if it wasn't disturbing, and it was.
Well, I completely agree with you, and I think that could have been easily predicted when the law went in. With the law, it listed a ton of rules.
They were.
That wasn't on Facebook, it was, oh, we can blow off fireworks now, so whoever created this, the law at the state level.
Right, right.
Was ridiculous. And to have municipalities then enforce that, you know, and then the police chief was here, and he kind of stated that, you know, we're not really going to be answering fireworks calls, because they knew they were going to be in town of them, you know, so I don't know if there's really any.
But I, my understanding is we can.
Well, I don't know.
You can't.
Okay, let, if I could jump in here, first of all, I want to share with you, Ms. Frank, that, that there are several holidays during the year at which this can take place, so it isn't the case where if you have concerns, you really can wait till next year.
Right, that's what I, I came back.
I don't remember the next one, but whatever it is, basically what it was, is Ohio, it passed a law, a General Assembly that says, we now allow higher degree of fireworks, so you can bottle rockets, and they call them small mortars, there's a certain degree, they call it consumer grade fireworks. There are a lot of rules, as Dr. Felner shared, you can't be within a hundred and fifty feet of a house, you can't be within a hundred and fifty feet of anyone in their age eighteen, but as the police and the fire departments said, enforcing that is a nightmare. I can assure you that my office worked with both departments, so they had the rules, and made sure that they had the rules, and they will tell you that, but at the same time, they were upfront with me, there's not much we can do. So what you are allowed to do, is you are allowed to pass an ordinance which says, the City of Galleon will maintain the level of fireworks that you've had up to this July fourth. which says the City of Gallion will maintain the level of fireworks that you've had up to this July 4th. So the new higher degree of fireworks will not be allowed to be discharged within city limits. That's, to some degree, a higher, an easier thing to enforce. You're still going to have people out there knowing about the new law and doing it anyway, but it, I always thought it was a cleaner enforcement, if there can be one, is cleaner and more effective to maintain the level that we've had for the last 20 years instead of moving to this new uncharted territory. And I hear things, even though I'm not a council, I hear things. There was a lady who told me at the long-term ad of all places that she had had 57 bottle rockets in the bed of her truck on Dawson. So, you know, I didn't have a problem near my house, but that's, that's just the way it was. So you have the ability at any time to enact that Mansfield enacted that that, to your opinion, the same level it was before, so.
Well, being a healthcare professional, my feeling is nothing happened. But what if we'd all be talking about it again? I think we just felt lucky.
How did we go about it in that? Yeah. It was go through laws and ordinances.
Laws and ordinances, committee.
They looked at a few, I think consciously, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that we looked at, the first time we talked about this before July, we looked at different ordinances, or tons had pulled some of the other cities had. So we kind of looked to see where they were. And it was kind of the general consensus of the room at that time that we weren't going to need it. And then I think after it happened, it was, it wow, a lot of, a lot of people really utilized this new ability to set off the fireworks and do all that. And I know just in kind of chatter, we were talking about there were, there was one accident, which was our fan, you know, just.
Can I do another?
And just a lot of the dog stuff, and, you know, people just, I think, I know my neighborhood is very active. I live on the end of Fellow Street, and there were lots of folks in the middle of the road setting stuff off all night, so.
Yeah, I don't look too far.
Yeah, my dogs would not go out. I didn't have my door open wide, one went off, they would run back in, they would have a dog outside. So I think maybe at the next law and ordinances committing, we can look at bringing back some of those other cities to see what they've done and do that.
Well, my, as Ms. Alt indicated, we, we, it was presented by the law director that this was going to change, was going to be coming. The thought was, like she said, was that we do have the ability to enact an ordinance to restrict or to actually put it back to where are utilized the laws that were on the books from the state before, I'll put it that way. But because it was such a new issue, and we thought, okay, let's see what would transpire. Because it, we thought maybe that, you know.
Nobody would buy the fireworks, would everybody?
Well, no, well, I suppose, no, you said it.
Everybody was reading the rules.
Yeah, well, it's.
I don't think they know that.
Well, the thing is, I've always been a big one for freedom. So I mean, I mean, I think the opportunity of relaxing something for folks is, is a good thing. But obviously, we do need to revisit it based on all the input that's been happening in regard to this. Now, as far as people getting hurt stuff, when we had the old rule, which was the state law, okay? We just followed the state law. We still had issues because people didn't legally then. You're still not necessarily going to keep that child from not blowing his hand off because his parent wasn't, didn't have the intelligence, you know, he was after. Because it makes me mad when that, things like that happen.
Well, right.
But other things besides the pets and all this, this is definitely something that we're going to be looking at law ordinance to see what the situation.
I just, I don't, I guess the question would be is, is it any different on enforcement if we revert back? Ms. Satterfield?
Chief, help us. Number one, I'm not sure that anything that was set off in the city was legal anyway.
But.
If you look at parameters.
Was it illegal?
If you look at the parameters of where they can do it. There's very few places in the entire city that you can actually do things. You can set off a legal firework and be legal within the parameters.
That's.
So changing the rules isn't going to matter because they've already violated the rules. Number two, if you're going to do this, I strongly urge you to contact either through Mr. Palmer's office or directly to the court and talk to the judge. Because if it's not going to be enforced, and it's not going to be punished, you're spreading your wings.
That's, that's what, that's, that's what was going with it, I don't.
And I'm not, and I, this is not a, this is not a degradation against the municipal court. I'm not saying that at all, but I believe it's a first-degree misdemeanor.
It is.
Punishable up to six months in jail and a thousand dollar fine. Think about that for setting off a firework.
But I'm talking about preventing.
I understand exactly what you're saying, and the law currently protects that. The law says you can't set it off within 150 feet of a residence or another person.
That's true.
Where in your neighborhood can you set it off that it's legal?
No where.
Probably no where. So the fact that a, an ordinance was set off in your, in your neighborhood was illegal on the surface anywhere.
But the implication, Brian, was that, or not implication, but the tacit reminder, whatever came, it's like, don't bother calling. You know, don't, don't call the police. That's kind of the message that I got.
I will tell you that in my.
And that's fine, I get it that you guys are, have way more important things to do than chase after firecrackers all night and Chief Jackson. But that was kind of the message that I got, was like, well, this is our new law, and, you know, don't, don't call. So I mean, maybe in years past, there would have been, if there was some excessive display, you know, you can put up with fireworks and disturbance for a period of time during the evening, nighttime, early morning hours, wherever you, you know. But, you know, if it becomes excessive, I think that, you know, a person has a right. And I'm just saying, I guess that was the message that I got.
And, and I could say that I was at the fireworks show, and, and I've been at other fireworks show. And people were setting off fireworks similar to the ones that were at the, that were shot during the show in the crowd. Kids were running around setting them off. I mean, to the point of like, my husband and I were kind of like, this is, you know, kind of ridiculous. That was, that was, you know, kind of, that was a big concern, like, they, it seemed pretty out of hand. It was even before the show, there were lots of people around, and, and we were just kind of taken aback, like, like, is the show over there, or, you know what I mean? It was, it was pretty profound.
And I think, too, that if we have a general rule, don't do that, that's easier for folks to understand that, oh, you can do this, but you can't do it here, you can't do it there, whatever.
Right.
And I think that, you know, it is hard to enforce certain rules and to do things, but if we have something more general that says no.
And it's like at that public, that whole public firework.
At the committee meeting or before that, we can also, or you can, look to other cities that did enact the ban, like Mansfield, see what their experience was. Maybe they had a tremendous, was it better enforcement, less enforcement? I mean, I don't know. But I mean, looking at other communities, I think can be a valuable experience.
Understanding how the enforcement was handled, I think, I think what I heard from Chief Jackson, maybe what Mr. Satterfield is saying is, is that enforcement previous to the law was difficult. And it's, the enforcement is equally as difficult now, but people are just confused now. So you're getting fireworks and enforcement.
Yeah, they up the, they up the amp.
Yeah.
Of the fireworks, I mean, it's not like, right, you know?
Right.
They, they up the amp to, you know, in a crowd like that, to a dangerous level. So I don't, I don't agree that.
And I don't mean to point fingers, I think it was a learning experience. Like, I didn't think about it either until the night, the night that it happened. And I was like, okay, I don't think this is a good idea. Like, I was open to it as well, but then, being in it, I was kind of like, I think.
Here's the thing, though, that every, all, so anything that goes bang, basically, anything that goes bang other than the little snap and pops, it was, it, it can't be set off anywhere within 150 feet of somebody under 18 years old. So everywhere inside, so it's against, it's basically against the law in Gallion because you're always going to be within 150 feet of someone. The enforcement of it was, is, is, has always been an issue and continues to be an issue. And, and I think that's, that's probably where, where I think that maybe we need to find out how enforcement's handled in other places, and maybe we need to look at that aspect of it. I don't, I'm not disagreeing, I'm, I'm just saying that I don't think that, I don't think that changing and reverting, my view is that changing and reverting back to the previous is going to do no good unless you understand how we can handle the enforcement. That, that's, that would be my view. Ms. Ziegler?
I was, and I might sound a bit caring for some of us, too, but is there anything in the ordinance that says anything about time limits as well? Because you've got people like you said, even in the early morning hours. And you saw people have to work the next day, and people are literally like right next to their house, letting them off two, three, four, five o'clock in the morning when other people have to work and get up, and you're keeping them up all night, which could be dangerous, you know?
There certainly is time limits, but they can't be. But we have here is a situation where no matter what you do, enforcement's going to be a nightmare, and it's going to have limited impact. Is that a reason not to enact laws? I don't know. I don't know that that's true. I think what's important is clarity. The word that got out across the state of Ohio was, it's no hold of ours. It's just, here you go.
Mr. Richard?
Well, another thing, maybe the state will get enough complaints from taxpayers that they may go back and, and we think.
Right, same here.
Follow the money.
Yeah.
Cat's out of the bag.
Mr. Spark?
Well, then the thing is, if it didn't affect you, you're not going to say anything. If affected, if nobody got hurt, no one's going to say anything. So.
Mr. Spark?
If there was a horrible accident, we'd all be talking about it. There was a fire because the conditions were dry, which I think the conditions were dry enough to say something, but. So it didn't, if it didn't affect you, you're not, you know, no one's going to say it. But why wait till it affects somebody and then somebody, I just believe in preventative, but that's, you know.
For what it's worth, that's in the rules as well. You cannot set them off in dry conditions.
I was going to piggyback real quick on some of this is, that's part of the reason why the feeling at the time was to allow the, which we never had an ordinance for fireworks in City of Gallion, just to let you know, first off, okay, we've never. What we've done is, the state law was always treated as the law of the community. So whatever that was, was how it was approached. I didn't agree, and I think that because of the way the state rolled it out, for the lack of a better term, there are all sorts of rules on this. In other words, it was just simply, yeah, you can take these out and shoot them all off, and you can do whatever you want to. There's all specific rules involved, but like Brian mentioned, Mr. Satterfield said, there is other issues involved enforcement of the the fact that you have people that, for lack of a better term, just wanted to cuddle if they thought that this is, wow, this is great. The other part of it is, too, no matter what we do in this community as far as a regulation, not only is it enforcement, but you also have the added dynamic that, wow, here's Gallion, okay? But all the other places around Gallion are, have whatever degree of laws involved in or none as related to the state law. So you have influx of individuals coming into the community. Prime example, the public fireworks. But it's not just folks from Gallion that go to that. So you have an influx of other people. I think that no matter how you look at it, even as, as Mr. Eric indicated, or Mr. Weber indicated, the law before was a difficult thing to enforce. So I think that this is something that we do need to discuss at law ordinance. But now whether or not we, what we decide might not be as far as putting another law on the books. It might, we might have to approach it in a different way. And I, and I am looking at talking to not only the fire chief, but our police chief and getting their input. I would like to also talk to the former police chief, because I want to get all our input from everybody that we, to look at this, okay?
Mr. Sparks?
So I like the idea about the time limits, but the other thing is the severity of the fireworks. I walked to the fireworks this year, and on my way, somebody threw an M80 right behind me and about scared the crap out of me, and I thought someone was shooting me. So that's a big difference between a firecracker and an M80. So just to let you know.
I saw a group of, like a parent, but a group of small children, and they were setting off the smoke bombs, which, you know, to them may seem harmless, but that's a big cloud of smoke that even someone who might have breathing issues could have been affected, and they were constantly over and over and over lighting off smoke bomb after smoke bomb after smoke bomb. You know, with small children standing right there, I mean, small is like probably four or five-year-olds, small children.
Well, I think we can all agree that it needs to go to, to some laws and, or laws and ordinances, I'm sorry. So maybe that's where we'll send it and take note for that. All right?
Can I bring up something, please?
Ms. Durbin?
I've been thinking about this since I came to, last year when I was elected, I started coming to the meetings during the budget process. And I would like to, I would like to see the department heads come to a meeting or present some written material to the council on what they see their department needs and why they need it, and what is, what is it? You know, like, we've not met the, the new water guy or the new the wastewater guy, you know, I don't know these people, I know Andy, that's, that's all I know. But I think would be a great way to meet, you know, since the budget process is going to start here pretty soon, is getting some input from them and just, just to see what, what their thinking is on, on, you know, prioritizing what they need for their department. Something to talk about?
I've got a finance committee meeting on the 20th. All right. Finance on the 20th, thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Well, just moving other business along.
Yes, very good, very good. What else we got? We have one, we have utilities meeting tomorrow?
No.
I'm sorry, that was last week.
Yeah.
Hearts meeting tomorrow. That's going to be here, 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock, yes, sir.
We have Streets. Mr. Barkins isn't here, looks like Streets.
It's the 14th, yeah.
Is on the 14th?
Yes.
And that's at 6:30, actually.
6:30, yes.
We have, that's the one that's at 6:30.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Frank, economic development is the 19th, right?
Yes. I thought, sorry. Yes, it is on the 19th.
The 19th? All right, we said the 20th, so the 20th, the next one is a police, police fire?
Police fire, that's on the 21st.
That's fresh. All right, very good. Thank you, any other business? If not, we can move to the official reports, Mr. Satterfield.
We have your bi-weekly, bi-monthly report from Crandu. First page is expensive report for 61 and a half percent of our target for the year. And we'll tell you that our office, along with the department heads, are really trying to monitor some of these the expenditures, because the cost of goods is way above what we budgeted. Way above. So I have it, I'm sure that the office is watching that as well, but don't be surprised if there's some legislation sooner than later to increase some budgets of needing or at least moving some funds, because whether it's gas or chemicals or whatever. Nobody anticipated the high rise in the expenses. Page two is revenue. We're at 44.5%. I can tell you that, I believe the second round of the AAR of the park of funds is going to hit back tomorrow, 550,000. So that's going to make a big chunk there. If I read the bank statement correctly.
How much did you say that was?
Like, 54.
Something like that?
I don't know, 50,000. That's round two, whatever it's called. Trunch, yes, that was the word I was looking for, trunch. And then your cash statement revenues, again, now a lot has changed. Most of the negative numbers that you see are in regards to transfers that have not been made. Or you've got encumbrances that are, if you look at the Alco Fund as an example, there's, there's 10.5 million encumbrances, what we encumber, what we anticipate to be the expenses for the rest of the year, I believe, so. While the ending balance is only, we're still at 10.5 million dollars of cash, so. If all goes well, we'll have somebody hired in the office by 1st or 2nd of August. Those interviews and backgrounds are ongoing, and we are desperately.
Is that for Jamie's position?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to tell you that we're making headway, but.
Did you know a lot about what you've been?
I think there was 14 or 15 people that, so. But it is, it is still a struggle thing. We're doing the best we can. If we can shut the doors for a week, we might get ahead, but I don't see that happening. I shouldn't have said get ahead, get a little bit more caught up. So any questions?
Mr. Satterfield, on the Alco Funds, were they allocated in the same fashion they were the first, the first go-around?
That's a hard question. I just deposited money.
They moved on this last year.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's the amount that we anticipated.
And there's been a couple of small items, like excess in the state that wasn't spent, we have 2800 bucks or something like that. But it's minor compared to what we do checks up.
Mr. Spark?
I don't have too much, I was looking at the general. It's still, you know, it's 20 million, and the ending balance is 8 million, but that's really good, that's one of the higher ones we ever had, but. Like, like Brian said, they're just trying to keep the riverhut of water. We've talked very, very briefly about an assistant, admin assistant in the finance committee meeting. I think we should seriously think about that to help Brian and us and whoever they hire in that office to get this thing straightened out. I think they've done a great job in what they've got.
Well, it's not, as it turns out, necessary for the finance committee to have input on it. That's Brian's call, you know, and to hire. And we're talking about a completely different position. You're talking about like an assistant auditor position as opposed to the Jamie the clerk position?
Yes.
Is that, okay, so, you know, when we discussed it in finance, we talked about the staffing tree and, and, you know, a position. It turns out that Mr. Satterfield has it within his right to make that hire without consulting that. Obviously, we have to find the funds to pay for the position, but we don't have to create the position. So I think as soon as Brian can hire someone to do, you know, like Jamie's doing payroll or, you know, to take that burden off, then he can concentrate on, you know, filling that position.
To be consistent, we probably should go ahead and update this staffing ordinance, just because everything else we put on there to keep it consistent. I mean, I'm sure you guys would do it, and so, so, which I can, you know, have ready.
But we can do it after the fact. I mean, we don't need to, we don't need to.
I mean, we could have, I could have it next finance meeting, and be ready.
Okay, all right, we can, we can talk about it. Am I speaking out of turn, Brian?
I don't think so. What was the question I got?
Okay. Mr. Palmer?
We'll have a conversation.
Is that your report?
Yo, oh, yo, who did this, Palmer, was that? Oh, I'm sorry, I was reacting to it. Well, it's just an audit.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm so sorry, Mr. Sparks, are you finished?
I do.
No, I was glad to hear that.
Okay.
No, I do not have anything to share this evening, happy to answer any questions other than that. We're not currently being sued.
Thank you, thank you.
That's good to know, though.
It is, you know, I would show you if we were, but.
All right, Claire, I, you know, I don't, I don't have any additional comments for tonight, so. I just ask for a motion to adjourn.
Since, since Mr. Tuckins not here, I will take the lead and say I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll sign the adjournment.
Richard, by, Ms. Durbin, all in favor? Any votes? Aye.